I call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing as writing verse, please do some prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you Father for this time together. And as we just said, how this country is indivisible, I pray that this city is indivisible. Things that are dividing us about these votes don't cause overly undue pressure and we ask you to be with us today. We love your name. Amen.
Amen.
Start with the roll call. Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Woodham.
Here.
Mr. Carey.
Here.
Ms. Lively.
Here.
Ms. Yun.
Here.
Mr. Burris.
Here.
Mr. Broderick.
Here.
Mr. Coon.
Here.
We have a quorum. The mayor is physically absent for reasons related to his health and desires to participate remotely as mayor and chair the meeting. He is eligible to do so under the Open Meeting Act and city policy. A motion is needed to allow the mayor to participate remotely. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Ms. Yun.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Start with public participation, in-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior commencement of the meeting and must address council from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Are there...
Yes. Yeah, Melissa Nichols.
First of all, I'll start off by saying, my husband and I both sent emails to everyone on the city council, so you've probably read those, so I'm probably not gonna, I'm not gonna go through and touch on everything for that. I'm here to speak on the change to the potential slow-moving vehicle ordinance. So, my husband and I live in Apple Tree subdivision. We live on County Farm Road. We moved to Monticello. We had lived here previously, moved back. My entire family lives here. Moved back approximately five years ago. At that time, we lived in Saragordo. We had a UTV that we loved to drive around. We used it on our, we had a couple acres of property. We used it there, cloud snow with it, absolutely loved it. When we moved to town, we knew that it wasn't, it was allowed in town, but would not be allowed from where we lived to travel into town. So, about six months after moving here, we chose to sell it, knowing that, you know, it just wasn't something we were gonna be able to, to fully utilize. Fast forward, this late summer, I was actually on vacation, traveling with my parents, and my husband calls and says, they're changing the speed limit on Bridge Street. I think we're gonna be able to, to use our golf cart. I'm like, what? Never thought that would happen. We camped, so we have a golf cart at our camp, at our campsite, and we talked about possibly bringing it home, talking through the options. We now have a two-year-old as well, so we have a little boy, and decided that, after waiting and waiting to kind of see that things are gonna be okay, we reached out to a couple different, you know, members within the city administration. We talked to others in our subdivision. We reached out to the police department because we asked about registration and what that looked like. We determined in October that, okay, this is a done deal. We're gonna go ahead and we're gonna move forward and we're gonna purchase a UTV. That's what we truly would prefer to have than utilizing our golf cart. We'd like to keep that at our campsite. With having our son, we wanted to have something that had the possibility for seat belts and just a little bit bigger vehicle for a little bit more visibility. We decided to make that purchase on, we brought it home on October 30th, and as we called to have it registered, we were told that there was conversation at a previous meeting that happened on that Monday that was not gonna allow them. At this time, we have still continued because we understand that there was some procedural errors, so we have gotten to utilize our vehicle. We've enjoyed it. My son loves it, absolutely loves it, lights up every time we walk into the garage because he sees it and wants to go for a ride and knows that we're gonna drive through the neighborhood and potentially take it into town and just kind of have a, have a nice, slow evening riding around in our UTV. So, a couple of things I wanted to mention is, obviously, we had made a very expensive purchase, which is no one's fault but our own. We're the ones that chose to make that purchase, but we did it on good faith that things were, you know, approved for us to use. And I know by listening to that meeting, going back and listening to that meeting, that there's over thirty, there was over thirty families on that side of town and in that area that have registered vehicles since then. And I can guarantee that there are others like us that have made purchases since then because only being able to ride something around the Apple Tree, basically, Apple Tree subdivision and potentially across Bridge Street into a very small area doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense. So, I'm sure that we are not the only ones that have made a significant purchase in that time. But I did wanna mention a couple of things. So, one thing I personally feel strongly about is the vehicle that we've got has all of the safety precautions, and in my opinion, it would be much safer than riding across Bridge Street, either on a bicycle, walking across Bridge Street, dealing with farm implements equipment that's going across Bridge Street, because I know I personally in a car been stuck multiple times by a, a large tractor or a combine coming the opposite direction or in front, and you just have to wait and have patience, or even on a motorcycle. And I know some people would love that. I personally do not, would not enjoy being on a motorcycle, but that's just my personal preference. So, I look at the safety aspect of, of some of the vehicles. Ours is extremely visible. It's bright orange, so you would not miss it, has all the reflectives, all the lights, everything that is needed for it to pass. With that, looking at, at the bridge, there is a significant shoulder on the bridge. Further down on Bridge Street, there's actually not a significant shoulder. I know that there is a center pass, a center turn lane, but there's not a significant shoulder. When we have crossed Bridge Street, we have hugged that shoulder and we have stayed over to the side and allowed other vehicles to go past us. We've never pulled out on the vehicle or on the road when we knew there were other cars there, just to really...
Just five minutes.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have Zach Carver.
Craver.
Craver. Sorry.
Thank you, because I always have that long witness.
A lot of the things she said, sorry Zach Craver, I live out in Apple Tree as well. It was, well, most of you probably got my emails. Shout out to the people who responded, actually. Thank you guys, Chief Eric, that meant a lot. She, I won't bore you with going over a lot of the details that she just did. Obviously, it's majorly the same for me. One of the biggest concerns you probably could tell from my email was, I'm a very data-driven person. It seems as though there was no thought process that went into this decision that's being made right now. It was made, kind of just, oh, there's a safety issue, right? To that point, I would argue, if we're coming into town off Monticello Road, what is the speed limit? Fifty-five. On Monticello Road, we immediately jumped down to thirty-five. That's a twenty mile an hour difference right there, but we allow golf carts there. There's no mention to even stop them from going all the way out to pregame, right? So, if we're talking about safety, it, it doesn't really fall on me that that's actually the concern we're looking at at that point in time. That's a massive difference comparatively to what Bridge Street is. It's also a lot more entrances and exits than that short little patch of Bridge Street. So, if we're really looking at safety on this, it, it just, it's very hard for us to believe, and I've talked to many people out in Apple Tree, that that is actually the consideration here. I know there was public outcry all over social media. Oh, my gosh, golf carts are all over the place. It, it feels more like it's appeasing people than it is safety at this point, appeasing members that may have complained, things of that nature. But to her point, we were a lot of the same. We've been saving up. We did plan. We've been saving up for a very long time because our family members in town have golf carts. We've been waiting for this thing to happen because we knew, hey, one day, what, since 2015, this has kind of been going on? It's been discussed a little bit, so we knew, one day, hey, we'll probably be able to drive a golf cart and get a golf cart and go into town, just like her, same precautions, lights, brighter lights than half the cars that are out there, everything like that. So, we saved. Once the decision was made, we adequately contacted the city. The city told us, yes, hundred percent, you can get the golf cart, you can drive on Bridge Street, absolutely. So, what did we do? We used the money we saved for this purchase to make that purchase, only for a month later, month and a half, it to be said, hey, yeah, no, you can't drive on that little quarter-mile stretch of road anymore. It's a safety concern at this point. That is, I mean, that's, it's cruel to be blunt. It feels very cruel that that's being done. I do, I don't see the safety issue with it. We've driven that probably fifty to sixty times and never had one issue. Further, I think if you look at what's going on throughout the city, the roads, all those other things, there's bigger issues to worry about at this point in time. Do we want cars driving on the roads that are falling apart, or do we want golf carts and lighter vehicles? Makes more sense to me in that. And I mean, you can smirk at me if you'd like, sir, but I, it makes sense, right? That's all. I'm gonna stop there before I say much more, but yeah, that, that was all I needed to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Jones.
Hi. Thank you. I do not live on the west side of town. I actually live on the east side of town, so that doesn't, not necessarily affect me directly, except for the fact that we have a, I believe, a multimillion-dollar park that's going out there, and I have six grandchildren who I think will probably be utilizing that. And I am retiring, and as an old person, I was looking to buy a golf port, golf cart, but I would like to be able to use it to go to that park, to watch their things that they're going to have. Some of the things, when we talk about safety, I'm all for that, but I also wanna know what data there was to provide, you know, were there accidents? Were there police reports? Were there near misses? What happened that in a month's time, we suddenly needed to take that privilege away from those people who wanted to access that bridge, which is basically all you're talking about? And as Zach mentioned a minute ago about coming in from Monticello Road, that shoulder is not very wide, not that I want them to lose that ability to go out there, because pregame is a very popular place, but it's also a very popular place that, you know, probably is, can be a safety issue as well, if you're going to look into safety. I think that what we need to do is, you know, these are adults that are supposed to be using these vehicles, and if we're not seeing adults using them properly, then as, you know, our police department should be looking into that. Some of the things that I looked up about golf carts is that they're cheaper to purchase, they're environmentally friendly, reduce traffic congestion, and again, when I talk about that park, we already know there's been some feedback about coming in off of whatever that road is. Wouldn't it be nice to have a little golf cart parking area there that might enhance people to use that instead of taking up a bunch of big parking spaces? For me, as a senior, it's great because it's easier to get in and out of sometimes and it's good for traveling for short distances. I also think it promotes a safer, slower speed. They only go a certain speed. That going all over that bridge, how many of us have been tempted to speed up to get to the interstate? It's gonna be a little harder to do that if you're following a golf cart, so it's going to help slow down those drivers that might impact going a little faster. And also, I think it's just really nice, as Zach mentioned, lower wear and tear on our roads, and that's really what we need to be looking at as a community, to lower those costs to repair and replace our roads. And that's all I really have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Are there any tonight more?
No.
Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report, claims dated November 11, 2025 to November 24, 2025. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, November 10, 2025. Closed session meeting minutes, November 10, 2025. Study session meeting minutes, November 3, 2025. Treasurer's reports, August 2025, September 2025. Budget report, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Question of city staff? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please, Robin?
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Ms. Yun.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mayor's report, November 24, 2025. New business. Welcome to the Green Door, a speakeasies bar opening soon in the lower level at 315 West Washington Street. Volunteers are still needed for the Christmas parade and lunch with Santa on the train activities. These events cannot happen without volunteers to fill the necessary roles. Check your email for signup links. Some upcoming events. Remember, the Investor Coffee for the Sangamon Valley CEO class is tomorrow morning from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. at 3:02. Stop in and meet with this year's class. Also, registrations are open for their class business. The Gingerbread Jog held December 20th. Holiday Glow at Allerton kicks off this Friday, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. with the Holiday Showcase in the Mansion, Strolling Madrigals, a fabulous bell choir performing in the brick wall garden, food trucks, carriage rides, and ornament-making workshops, all in addition to the Illuminated Mile Long Walk featuring artists and Allerton. The Christmas Parade is next Saturday, December 6. Council, if you wish to ride in the city vehicles, please let me know ASAP so we can make accommodations. The Annual Holiday Vendor Bash is also Saturday from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Monticello Community Building. Remember to shop local this holiday season. Small Business Saturday is this weekend, and your community, community needs you. Moving on to old business. 2025-56, an ordinance amending Chapter 76, Schedule 4, speed limits other than 30 miles per hour in the city of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Motion to ratify the approval of ordinance 2025 and any actions taken there under, to date, NUC ProTUN. Is there, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-56?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, are there any comments from city staff?
I, I do, and I, this addresses, I think, any of the speed limits and plus, you know, the upcoming vote potentially on the low-speed vehicles. And one of the things was brought up when this was passed, you know, a couple of months ago, and I think very accurately, is that the city shouldn't, there were, been several errors that have happened from the city in, in these two things. Number one, we shouldn't have brought speed limit to the city council if there hasn't been a, a actual study. That's one of the things I appreciated from the email from, from Zach, is that there needs to be studied. There was no study. There was no outcry to lower the speed limit, and so I think before we do anything, I think there needs to be proper, those things are not that expensive to do, and I think the data then tells us, you know, what we should do. And I think the same thing with the golf carts. You know, I can't say yes to having low-speed vehicles. You know, if there's a study that says, hey, this is fine, that makes it much easier to do. And so, I mean, I, I think it's, it's put undue, maybe negative negativity on this council. I mean, the other things that have, that have happened that I think, first off, we shouldn't have passed the speed limit, and at the same night, we should have decided what we're gonna do with the golf carts. We had this two-month gap, you know, the, the sign was taken down right away. When we, when we passed, I think I brought up before, when we passed the, the Monticello Roads, we, possession of that road, I mentioned, you know, unless it have anything to do with lowering the speed limit, I was told no. And as soon as this, we took possession, the speed limit came up and the city council wasn't notified. So, I, I feel, I feel bad for the people on that side of town who have, you know, have made the effort to purchase the golf carts, but there shouldn't have been communication from the city that said, this is a done deal, because we've had discussions, this was not a done deal. And so, I, you know, that, that adds to the strain here. We've had this gap. It doesn't, in my mind, it doesn't mean we shouldn't do what ultimately is best, just because we've had these, you know, a couple of months in here, but, you know, I feel bad that this is happening. I think, hopefully, we've learned a lesson that we shouldn't be rushing these things through without studying it, and I'm hoping in the future, when speed limits or other things come in like this, you know, if there's been data to support, this is what we should do, then that makes it much easier for council. And it wasn't, and either one of these, it didn't happen, so.
May I say something? Chief Bros, actually, for one of our meetings, you did talk about studies that you guys did specifically on Bridge Street, correct? With some of...
So, I gave you the accident numbers, and I'm gonna bring up 625 ILCS 5/11-604, alteration of limits by local authorities, Section B. Whenever any such park district, city, which is us, village, or incorporated town determines upon the basis of an engineering or, not and, or, traffic investigation concerning a highway or street on which it is authorized by this section to establish speed limits, that a maximum speed limit prescribed in Section 11-601 of this chapter is greater or less than is reasonable or safe with respect to the conditions found to exist at any place or along any park or zone of any such highway or street, the local authority or park district shall determine and declare by ordinance a reasonable and safe absolute maximum speed limit at, at such place or along such park or zone. County, I believe, has a different rule. This is the Elmo State statute. It does not require engineering study. You can do a traffic investigation on it. So, I just wanna make sure that is...
I would like to add that whenever this was brought to us, we discussed the four entrances into town, and there was a very well-put-together presentation that addressed the, the certain areas. Bridge Street was, I thought, addressed very well, and Chief did discuss the fact that we had multiple different speed limits, depending upon which direction we're going, which kind of confused things, and the fact that he, you know, police officers aren't allowed to enforce the speed limit for 500 feet past, past the sign, really handcuffed how he can patrol that, that area of town. I, I know people said, well, you know, the city council did this for golf carts. Not the case at all, and I feel if there was anything that we did that should be looked at again, it was not standing on top of the roof, letting everyone know that, because that was the assumption that everyone thought we lowered the speed for golf carts and that was it. That was not the case. We did it because it was brought to us by the chief of police with safety concerns. I've not heard anyone complain directly to me about the speed limit. I've seen people go online, but you're gonna have that, no matter what decision we make. I have had a couple people say that they have appreciated the lower speed. I mean, I myself have to be aware of it because I've lived here for... And you try and drive. Forty years, you know, I've been driving on it since I was 16, so it takes some getting used to, but it's not anything that's, you know, inconvenienced me greatly. And if anything, it's, you know, like we said when we, when we made this decision, it's addressing issues now with sidelines at Fisler Road, with sidelines at, is it Foothill, with changing of different speeds depending upon which direction you're going, and it's also addressing a future issue that we see coming down the road, which is these, the extra traffic we're gonna get when these ball fields open. And I would rather go through the phase of learning that speed limit now without that extra traffic in the mix. And then lastly, you know, the other speculation is that we lowered the speed limit to increase the funding off of tickets. Do we need to buy a bunch of toasters, give out, give the toasters for tickets?
No. No. We did not do anything with the intention to make, first of all, everyone thinks, oh, quota. No. Out of a $164 ticket, we get maybe $48. If you go back to all my traffic stops, most of the time I, I give warnings because I don't want, and my feel is, I don't like giving the county or the state of Illinois any more money than what I already do. So, if it was a toasters for tickets program, we'd be writing people for doing 5-0. That's not the town we want. We wanna have a little bit of grace played in there.
And that's what I assumed.
Hey, can I piggyback off of that and back to what, so I'm, our, the meeting where you gave the presentation about, you know, that, those particular streets, also that there's a school bus stop? So, in that meeting, we talked about safety issues with that, but also, like you said too, we know Oberheim Park's gonna be opening, so we thought we would get ahead of it. In that meeting, I brought up twice the issue of golf cart, golf carts, and I had no understanding when I left the meeting and we voted as we did, that that meant golf carts would then be driven on Bridge Street. And I remember I was coming back from the library this Saturday, right after that, we had that vote, and I saw two golf carts on the bridge, and I'm like, why are there two golf carts on the bridge? When did we vote to have golf carts on the bridge? It was my assumption that that wasn't even on the agenda, so if, you know...
That wasn't a vote.
No, we didn't.
But what we, what we did...
Right.
We moved that out, that opened the gates, so they could, because then it's not, then the, the difference in the speeds are, are correct enough where they come that way on a, in a golf cart, or, they were, people were doing right. When they removed the sign, that was the correct thing to do with that speed limit.
Yeah, but, but that's not something that I expected, and you know, we're the...
Your expectations are, that, that's a product of what's gonna happen anyway. Our expectations of approving everything that everybody does in town is not. That's really not our job. Our job is not to make, let everybody do whatever, you know, make people do certain things and not do other things.
But our mistake was not having that golf cart thing on the agenda that day, just to make that decision, so it could all be clear.
But see, that's, again, that's what I'm saying. That is not our decision to make. When we made the decision of the speed, that was, that was, that was assumed. Once that happened, that law stand, that rule stands already, at certain speeds, you can drive a golf cart. At 45 mile an hour, you cannot drive a golf cart in that same lane of traffic.
Well, you may have assumed that.
No, that's not an assumption.
Okay, but I'm saying for the, some of us on the council, we did not assume...
You didn't think through the whole process, is what you're saying?
We talked about it in that meeting, and I said, I don't think having golf carts is safe going over the bridge, that not equate, that was...
And that's, and that's how we got to the golf cart, because, you two brought that, you brought that forward. That's how we got to this vote, because you guys felt it was unsafe, and you talked to Terry, and you asked that to bring, bring, we brought forward as an item, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Now, see, just the, the reality is, when that speed limit moved, again, that opened the door for them. Whether you recognize that or not, that's what happened.
Real quick, and, and to echo what, golf carts were not the issue.
No.
The issue, and, and to Mike's point, I understand engineering studies, we've done for putting out of stop signs and yield signs and so on and so forth. To Rob's point, we didn't, that's not mandatory, and we looked at that, we looked at Bridge Street, and, and I have had several residents complain about safety issues there, okay? Now, that was one, there's three things you look, three, three things of, of what IDOT recommends is alignment of the road, and we've talked about the horizontal curve by Fisler Road. That is an, that is a known issue. The sight distance at that same intersection, that is a known issue. The safety of those...
issue. The sight distance at that same intersection, that is a known issue. The safety of those intersections, Foothill Railroad, the school bus, you're crossing, people are, pedestrians are crossing Foothill and Railroad to get to the bike and hike trip. There's three lanes of traffic there. One's doing 50, and one's doing 35. That is a huge safety concern. I see it every day, our public works guys see it every day. So I feel, and you, you obviously wanted something more, I think an investigation was done. It had nothing to do with golf carts. And at that meeting, we talked about 35. Somebody brought up, what about golf carts? Chief said, well, if it becomes an issue, we could address it. That's what Chief Bros said during that meeting.
But if it becomes an issue, then we're back at square one and we're doing this again.
If it becomes an issue--
If it's an issue--
Two months or two years, then pass an ordinance to prohibit it.
We would have the data at that. Because right, right now, through the years of accident data, we have through LexisNexis, that's how we keep track of all our accidents. Excuse me. I can't find any that involve low speed vehicle, a golf cart.
On that section, on that section of grid.
Anywhere in the city corporate limits, anywhere. Regular vehicles, and I just pulled this, for regular vehicles from Old Route 47 to Railroad, we've had nine accidents there with three injuries. That's back when it was--
Hearing or seeing none, may have a roll call, please, Robin.
Mr. Terry?
Clarify, please, by voting yes, we're lowering the speed limit to 35.
That's correct.
All right, just to make sure. Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on, old business. Ordinance 2025-63, an ordinance implementing a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service occupation tax. Motion to ratify the approval of ordinance 2025-63 and any actions taken there under to date nuke pro tunk. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-63?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion or comments? City staff have, have anything they want to address?
I had a question. It's that memo that it's estimated to impact the general sales tax by 200,000. And then I think, is that, is that an accurate estimate?
Callie and I looked at, and we talked to other villages and towns, and nobody can, you can't find that data anywhere.
Okay.
You, you just cannot find it. We have sales tax resources, Callie does at her disposal, but it doesn't break out these eligible grocery taxes by, out of whole, the whole sales tax. Some, Mohammed was too, they're estimating 200,000, 300,000. If you look, if you remember FY 2026, I, I was so conservative, I, I put $50,000 in the, in the grocery tax, because we honestly have no idea where we're going to be. I'm interested to see where it pans out.
Other comments?
I have one, Larry. Just to that point, I'm glad we're revisiting this, and I understand it's, it's not new, and we're not sure exactly what the revenue is. But $50,000 seems relatively small to me. I, I think tax is a regressive tax. I'm not for it. I don't like the idea of taxing people based off, they need to feed their families. And I think for as small as it is, we should let go.
Any other comments? Hearing or seeing none, may have a roll call, Robin.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
I'm sorry. Just one more to clarify on this one. Yes is we're keeping the tax, no is we're removing the tax.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
No.
Ms. Lively?
No.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
No.
Mr. Broderick?
No.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion fails.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The tie. Mayor.
Mayor votes no.
Motion fails.
Moving on to ordinance 2025-74, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 78 of the City of Monticello Code of Ordinances to prohibit non-highway and low-speed vehicles on Bridge Street west of Foothill Road Railroad Street. Motion to ratify the approval of ordinance 2025-74 and any actions taken there under to date nuke pro tunk. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-63? Somebody's so moved. How about a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
Want to clarify the--
Yes.
The vote of yes?
Yeah, the vote of yes means that we are going to prohibit low-speed vehicles on Bridge Street.
Oh, yes means prohibit. Okay, gotcha.
Ms. Reed?
No.
Mr. Woodham?
No.
Mr. Carey?
No.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
No.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mayor needs to vote?
Mayor votes yes.
Motion passes.
Wait, is the, is the mayor--
Motion fails. Motion fails.
Okay, so no.
No is what I meant to say, I'm sorry.
Okay, motion fails.
We need to catch him.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm just going to say--
Mayor say yes or no?
Mayor said no.
But it was a mistake.
It was a mistake.
Thank you.
The motion failed.
Thank you.
Do we need further clarification?
Golf carts are allowed on Bridge Street, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Ordinance 2025-77, an ordinance levying taxes for all corporate purposes, the City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois, for the fiscal year commencing on January 1, 2026, and ending on December 31, 2026. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-77?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments by city staff? Any questions by council?
Or does it raise the property tax, it's just-- So property tax, they'll go up--
Unmuted.
It's 4.9%.
No one does.
This is that other-- I'm just making sure. Terry, is somebody from city staff reading the memo on these?
Yeah, let me, Larry?
Yeah.
Do you care if I just read the memo for--
Go right ahead.
Do you care if I just read it for all these levies?
Yes, that's fine, go right ahead.
Okay. In accordance with the, this is from 2025-77. In accordance with true taxation law, the city council approved an estimated tax levy at the October 27th city council meeting. You were also presented with a draft copy of the property tax levy ordinance, and were informed that these items would appear before you at tonight's meeting. The proposed FY 2026 budget includes 4.9% increase in the property tax revenues. So if we get $1 million in property taxes, we are asking for 1,490,000. That's, and then it's spread out over the 10 or 12 or 20 new homes built in Sage Meadows or Jefferson Grove, wherever. Ordinance 2025-78 and 79 and 80 deal with the existing special service area taxes that we have implemented on specific populations. Special area number three includes Sage Meadows. That was established by ordinance 2017-48. It's those residents that live within Sage Meadows and nowhere else. Special service area number four is Walden Pond. It was established in 2017, and again, deals with just those residents inside that boundary. Special service area number five is the Dancing Acres Residential Subdivision. That levy was established in 2023. These levies will be established maximum amount of 50 cents per $100 of equalized assessed value in the subject territory. So this is, these are, these were created as one of the items in our toolbox of incentivizing development. This is one of those that we can use to get development going. The developer gets more money if he starts building soon. And if he waits for 20, 30 years and doesn't build, he doesn't get much money back. So it is recommended city council approve ordinance 2025-77, approving the property tax levy. Ordinance 2025-78 and 79 and 80 approving special service areas three, four, and five at tonight's meeting.
Are you wanting to do those as a group?
We have to do them one at a time.
Just do them, yeah. Let us do, so, a motion for 5-77, the property tax.
And we--
We have those motions. If I want to, we have one and a two for that. So now we just need to vote.
I'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2025-78, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of a tax for the fiscal year commencing on January 1, 2026, ending on December 31, 2026, for special service area number three of the City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may have a roll call, please, Robin.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-79, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of a tax for the fiscal year commencing on January 1, 2026, ending on December 31, 2026, for special service area number four of the City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may have a roll call.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2025-80, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of a tax for the fiscal year commencing on January 1, 2026, ending on December 31, 2026, for special service area number five of the City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All other persons report. Andrea?
Done tonight.
Cole?
Sir?
Ryan?
Well, I never thought I'd say this, but it's good to see your face again.
Thanks so much.
Welcome back, and hopefully you're with us again soon.
It'll be pretty soon, I think. Mr. Reed?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hume?
Alderman, Carrie and I took a tour of the wastewater management plant and maintenance. It was very informative, and I just want to report that everything is done spick and span. We have qualified people leading the departments, and I just feel really good about the direction the city's going with that. I also wanted to apologize for the fact that we were going back and forth between speed limit, golf carts, and then having to revote because there wasn't like a, like a five, majority of five votes for that. I realized it was very confusing, and, and a lot of people made financial decisions based on that. And so I think in the future, we're just going to be very cognizant of all the repercussions involved in our decisions. I believe in, in this case, we were short-sighted, that we didn't, that we did the speed limit and kind of took the golf cart as a separate issue and didn't consider all of the things. As for me, I think in the future, it's a real lesson to go ahead and look at all that. So I wanted to apologize for my responsibility in that part, and thank everybody in the city for their input and support.
Thank you.
I can't follow that.
Mr. Burris?
I can't follow that.
You're not got, Eric, how about you?
Not tonight, surprisingly.
Mr. Coon?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you very much. Police chiefs report.
Real, real simple. We had a lot of cooperation with some of the Monticello officers and the sheriff's office to work at the General Cable Building. That's becoming kind of a go-to for some of our friends indicating that like to steal. So we were able to get it drawn up. It has a wonderful spotlight and thermal, so we were able to find them relatively quickly. Just a heads up to kind of piggyback on the Christmas parade on December 6. There will be, it's the same parade route, but we wanted to free up some of the downtown parking, just to make sure there's a little more room, a little more people, room for people to kind of move around. So we will be blocking off, I think, about a block on a couple of the one ways, but we'll make sure we, we put that out probably the week of the parade, so probably right around the third or fourth, just so people have a heads up that they may not, what we want to avoid is for them to go down to a dead-end street, find out there's no parking, and then now they have to back up down the wrong way down a one-way. So we'll be putting that out probably the Wednesday before the parade.
That's it?
Yes.
City Administrator Terry?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor Solder.
Okay, I really would like to apologize once again for not listening to my own instructions on the vote that I, that I vote that I almost messed up. I, I, I know that I'm 77, I'm the oldest person in the room right now, and your room too. And I still think that when you're voting for something, yes is the appropriate thing when you're in favor of something. So that caused me a little confusion. So I apologize once again. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? See you, see you in December sometime.